First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. There's been no additions, no corrections. I'd take a motion.
I move.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet. Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four is public comments. It's time and place for any comments, for any other, any items other than those listed in the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council? Hearing none or seeing none. Moving on to item five. Item five is consent agenda. I'll take a motion. Questions? Come up.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Lane.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yep. Motion carries. Item six is new business under new business action item one, Lakewood's plat one. Item A, public hearing on proposed amendment to the Polk City Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. Time and place to close the regular meeting and open public hearing on proposal and amend the Polk City Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. I'll ask the clerk when the notice is published.
No, then report.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
This time I'd like staff to make a report.
Very quickly, your honor, taking to the future land use map. The location that we're talking about is in here, and this area is considered low-density residential. The application you have in front of you, first let me explain low-density residential. That is four or more housing units per acre. The rezoning petition that you have in front of you will require that the future land use map, if so chose to be done, needed to be updated to a medium-density residential as this rezoning would result in 5.1 residential units per acre. So, the public hearing tonight on this particular portion is should this area be updated in your future land use map with a change from low-density to medium-density.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the amendment?
Evening, mayor members counsel. Caleb Smith, McClure Engineering Company, 1360 Northwest 121st and Clive. I'm here representing Todd and Christie Drake, and they are with Drake Homes, and they're the ones who are going to develop and build in this project. Right now, before you, it's a comprehensive plan amendment, which is a little different than the PUD. Obviously, it's coming up. If it pleases the council, I can kind of talk through both, because I think they're perfectly critical moving together. As some of you may recall, Lakewood was originally planned all for single-family residential, and that was planned back before the, as some people are calling it, the Great Recession. The original plan was for single-family units all through this, this location here. The road was going to continue all the way out to Parker Boulevard with Lincoln and Roosevelt extending north and south through there, having single-family lots fronted through there. So, a couple of things changed since then. Obviously, one of the things that's changed is the development to the north and the west of this townhome project, and that's kind of impacted the, the existing Lakewood's property in a couple of different ways. Number one, the road is no longer really viable going through there, so that, that's really kind of changed the dynamics of how this piece is going to work. The other thing, after we start looking at it, with the garages being located so close to the perimeter, it was really a concern to develop single-family residential here and put in potentially $300,000-plus homes in that location, and having a garage sitting right in behind your backyard, that's such, such a long linear kind of structure. So, as we started working on this project and trying to figure out how we could get this property developed properly, Todd and Christie started exploring some ideas about maybe doing some townhomes in here, and we looked through a bunch of different ideas, and what we came up with was a sort of a variation of this. This has kind of evolved as we've gone through the process with P&amp;Z, but the general land transition was kept intact. These nine lots being proposed here are not part of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment or the rezoning request. We left those as R1A. In fact, they're the same configuration was originally approved, it's original preliminary plat done well over 10 years ago. Across the street, what's being proposed is detached townhomes. We like to call them villas, so they have all the benefits of the exterior being maintained by the association, but, you know, you have no shared walls, and you enjoy it footprint. That's very similar to what single-family residential house could be. Transitioning further west, before we get into this more dense townhome product, Todd and Christie are proposing to do some biotatch products in that location. Just to kind of get a feel, we don't have specific elevations, but what kind of was the design idea that kept coming up was this Grant Park project in Waupke, and as you can see, two-car garages, two-story, decent amount of square footage in there. That was kind of, that's what we want to be able to develop out there. We want to make sure that, one, that the land use will allow them to do this product, and then as they move forward with the project, we'll come forward with specific details on both elevation and footprints as time and site plan comes. But this is what we use as our, as our starting point. We try to mimic that building square footage and the initial lot layouts we've got here. So, to give you a feel for what those are going to look like, that's a pretty good example. Recognizing the PUD needs to provide something more than just, hey, we want to reduce setbacks and increase density. We've worked in, we've worked in some public parking here. We're going to put a gazebo feature right there. It's kind of centrally located to provide maybe a gathering spot in the open space throughout the property, just to give something a little bit different than just a straight-up townhome development. Key point to point out as we're proposing this, Lincoln Way here is a private street will be owned and maintained by the association. We'll build it per standard city specifications. There's no difference to deviate from that, but that will not be a responsibility of the city to maintain. That'll be a responsibility of association. So, nice thing is, you're going to pick up a lot of density here from a tax-based perspective in a street you don't have to maintain. So, that's kind of a quick summary of the proposal. If you have any specific questions or want to delve further, I'd be happy to do so right now. And Todd and Christie Drake are here with me tonight if you've got specific product questions or anything else about what we're looking at.
Anybody have any questions?
Not specifically a question, I have a general comment.
Okay. Report.
We spent like nearly 18 months, and how much money we paid Snyder and Associates, and countless hours of volunteer time developing this comprehensive plan. It's supposed to take us for 20 years. We approved it less than a year ago, and I believe this is already a second amendment to it. Why are we putting so much money and stuff into a report that once anything comes up that's contrary to it, we just go willy-nilly out and change it to conform for what somebody wants to do? Why are we not being a little more specific? And this isn't nothing against the two of you. I have no problem with you trying to maximize your profit. That's the American way. But I just think that a little more care should be taken maybe at the planning, excuse me, at the planning and zoning level to try to work with these people to conform to our plan instead of just jumping and changing our plan to conform with their wishes. Nor am I the only one that feels this way. If I were all these people that spent all this time on that plan, I would feel insulted.
I don't agree with, or disagree with you, Ian. I agree with exactly what you're saying. However, I think this meets another objective of ours as well that's also in that, somewhere in that PUD. I don't, can't recite the exact verse, but as far as more affordable housing, and I believe this would meet that need, and them being the landowners and a plan like that that they can make work, there's not too many places I know of where we can get that kind of land for any developer to build at that price point anymore. And so, I, I fully, glorably hear what you're saying and agree with you, but I think this is kind of, at least in my opinion, a special circumstance where we can meet one of the other objectives of that plan, where I don't know how we can do it otherwise until land comes down. But I do, I do understand your, your thought.
Well, yeah, I, like I said, it wasn't necessarily specific to this.
No, I, I know where you're coming from, so I, I can sympathize exactly with what you're saying, but it's also an opportunity to meet one of the other goals, so I'm kind of over there.
So, you mentioned the recession in '08 and the development to the west as the two primary factors in changing what was originally single-family to, to this plan. So, did you guys receive notice of the development to the west when it went through? And, and signed off on that?
I, that's a good question. I can't remember if we did or not.
I'm sure we did.
Yeah. Okay. Is that, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Rob, too, but I, I mean, it seems to me that in the eight years since the recession, that we've recovered and probably then some, and, and this development, as I understand it, to the west came completely within your guys' ownership of this parcel, correct? So, I guess I'm struggling with the same rationale as the minority opinion of the planning and zoning the last time and the original reason that it didn't go through, which is increasing density in, in an area that, to me, seems ripe and applicable for single-family entry-level homes, which is what it would be surrounding on, on two sides at least. And I guess I, to, to make that change, I'd need to hear something more than...
Yeah, and one of the things that you're going to find, the single-family lots right now, I mean, I'm just going to guess, if the kind of the entry level you're talking about are going to go for $65,000 plus or minus around there would be my guess. You're not going to build a house on any one of those that are going to be pushing $300,000. The only way you're going to get entry-level new housing in this market right now is by increasing density like was being proposed here. See, then the nice thing about what's, what this plan says is the single-family lots, let's just use the $300,000 ballpark for that one, because there's going to be plus or minus around there. Then when you go into the villas, those are going to probably be in that 250 to 300 range. When you get into this biotatch stuff, the only way, at least that I've seen in the market, to get that price point down is to get density increased and narrow up those footprints a little bit, which is what's being proposed here. You know, this product here, I'm sure Todd and Christie, if you, if you know their product, it always tends to be very well-finished, looks very nice on the outside, so it's going to probably be up above what it could be if some other developer was in here. But the only way we're going to get to a point where someone's going to go buy a new house here is by providing that kind of option as well. And that's just the dynamics of what we're facing from an economic perspective at this point in time. Building the 65-foot lot, it's $1,000 a foot plus all across the metro, including Polk City.
No, and I'm, I'm sure the product that you're doing is every bit you said, but I, I think we're approving this for a permanent change, and so, you take your face value for, for all of those recommendations, but my concern is how it would be different, again, in this type of environment as opposed to maybe what would be maintained in the single-family, which seems to be more in the, in the continuity of, of some of the other neighborhoods, but...
I have a comment to Dan first. This is the, I think, the third comprehensive plan I've been involved in, and it's always been a Kathleen. If I say anything that's out of line, let me know.
My second.
Yeah. They're, they're not a hard, fast rule, a comprehensive plan. It is a, just said, a comprehensive plan, and I've always been told that they're a living, breathing document, and if there's something you need to change, then they are changed. And it's not the first time we've changed a comprehensive plan by any means. But I also take your point, that a lot of work went into this.
Nice in less than six months.
Yeah. If, if it starts to be a habit, then we'll have to revisit what happened beforehand. And my other comment is, is just how much has this increased the, you know, per acre? How, how many more are, if this was a straight R1A, how many dwellings would be in there as opposed to what we have now?
It's a good question. I was trying to do that math here as I was sitting here as the meeting was getting started. I think we're up about 14, 15 units with this plan from what was originally proposed.
Well, I didn't think it was that many from what we saw the first time, but...
Oh, we actually lowered it from what it was first time.
Oh, yeah.
The, the original one that went to P&amp;Z had a kind of hammerhead T intersection.
Yeah, yeah.
We've actually backed some units off. Two units are down off of that plan to accommodate the cul-de-sac idea here. I thought you were trying to go back to the original preliminary plan. I misunderstood you.
Well, and, and I agree with what you're saying, Rob, but it's like a lot of other stuff we've talked to, talked about tonight and then other nights, to get something that's needed within the town, sometimes you have to make some sacrifices. That's not to say that you're wrong, but if...
It's a nice way of saying that.
Yeah. If these, if these are indeed something that's needed and going to go in Polk City, then maybe we have to sacrifice some of that density.
Just a second. Yeah, go ahead, you.
Well, I, I just had a couple of things, you know, going back, and I, and like I said, I, I take heart with everything everybody said, because I believe they'll have valid points. However, if you look at what's on the rolls right now, what's coming, including north of town, we have three, whatever, 100-plus single-family lots coming, which is good. However, 65 is probably very nice. I mean, those could come down, but most of those are minimum 65, if not 100. And quite honestly, as the, the prices for materials go up, these builders really aren't making a whole lot more. It's, it's another factor that we can't control. So, if, if we ever want to have affordable housing, and I mean, that, that work changes over the years, obviously, I, I don't know how we can deal with the single-family setup that we currently see unless something substantial changes. And, and I, and I agree, we don't want to change this stuff willy-nilly overnight, however you want to look at it, or even more, but opportunities like this are the only ways to get affordable housing these days. And the, the other questions I have on that is with that privately-held street, we have an area by you, Cherokee, that it's not the same, but it's high-density. It's a big parking problem on the street and everything else. Would that zoning allow, where it keeps cars off the street, or, I'm just wondering, would it be a narrow road where we have a lot of issues there long-term?
What that we've, one of the things we've done, they'll have to have two-car garages. They'll have two cars, and they'll always have at least 20 feet between the sidewalk and the garage, so there's always two parking spaces on each, for each lot, plus the visitor parking.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're, the area I'm talking about, if you're unsure.
Yeah.
That's what I always want to make sure we avoid.
Yeah, they have single-car garages and some more.
Double stack.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other, and I don't know, but when I look at the, the plan from before that was approved for the Loveco property, by us changing this, did that require him to do anything extra that he would have otherwise not had to? Or is that, okay, that doesn't mess with it. Okay. Now, that's, that's the gist of it.
Well, I don't know if this answers the question you were asking around, but from the information provided by the engineer, the reason we need to change the zoning is because the density will now be 5.1 units per acre.
Yeah.
So, that's just slightly above the maximum of four allowed in low-density.
It's tough to say though, but...
If we... Yeah, my comment is, I just want to make sure that every care is taken, that changing the planning and zoning is the last resort, not the first.
Yeah, well, and if this gets to be a habit, which it kind of is getting to be with the planned unit development, it's getting to be kind of a habit, then I'm going to have to change my whole opinion. It seems to me like, and I've said this before, that that's not the object of a planned unit development. The object of a PUD is to provide more green space to let people develop to fit the topography. Well, I don't know when, but that's gone out the window, because everybody just changed the topography now to build what they want. You don't build, if there's a hill there, you don't build around the hill, you move the hill. That's a trend in Polk City. And Todd can probably answer this question better than anybody else, that home builders operate on a percentage. They, they're looking to make whatever it is, 15% on a house or 20%, I have no idea. But the bigger, more expensive house they build, the more money they're going to make, so nobody wants to build small houses. Am I far off from the truth?
I want to be a builder.
I don't know what the percentage is, but...
Way lost.
Yeah.
Give me the next.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard for or against the amendment?
Sure.
Sure. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jason England. I live at 920 Tyler Street. I heard about this a while ago. I wasn't too crazy about it then. I'm not too crazy about it now. I've got a handful of concerns. Drainage, first of all. I sit in the low spot of Tyler Street in my backyard. Yet to see a topographic map to let me know where any of that water's going to go. So, that's a valid concern. Concern number two, density. Every time that we've made a zoning adjustment in my neighborhood, it's always been to add more townhomes, whether they be rentals or, you know, what have you. Population density-wise in my neighborhood is probably more saturated than anyplace else in town. I mean, I haven't run the numbers. That's just what I, what I think. I can stand on my front porch and throw a baseball in any direction, and after this is built, I'll be able to hit a townhouse. So, maybe we're, you know, taxing the traffic, the sidewalks, city services. I haven't studied it. It's just a valid concern, especially when we're putting more people into this neighborhood. I mean, we're going to have our own night at the State Fair here before long. It'll be just like Eastside or something, right? Probably not.
Careful.
Careful. Careful. Trying to save you.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Other concern is corporate citizenship. I know that it take, you have to have a certain amount of approval from the people in the neighborhood to even get on the docket of the P&amp;Z. The 70% approval that they came up with, that is now the 73%, all came from corporate entities within the neighborhood. I haven't seen anything from any of the neighbors or the people that actually live there that say, "I'm on board with this project." They got approval from the, the church that's being built. They got approval from Mr. Loveco, because he's already locked, landlocked him, so, you know, he's going to go with whatever. And then there's a little rental property at the end of Roosevelt, and they said, "Yeah, let's do it. Great plan." So, the neighbors that actually live there, the people that live in the community, haven't been questioned at all about this. Well, I take that back. They've asked us a few questions. They've made some presentations. We've taken our opportunities to, you know, at different times, perhaps disagree, but I don't know that any of those disagreements have ever made it this far. A couple of them showed up at a P&amp;Z meeting once. I know that I personally missed both of them, but, so I'm not real sure that we're making the right decision by increasing density. You know, the, I haven't heard any of the citizens that actually live in that neighborhood that support the project. So, I think that's probably all I've got today. But if I think more, I'll let you guys know.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
I've, I've thought actually a lot about what you already said, because having lived up there, if anyone wants to see a traffic nightmare, just try exiting our neighborhood. It's a disaster.
That's only going to get worse.
Right. However, the only, the only reason, thing I keep coming back to, and I've, I've thought about this over and over again, is even since, you know, when I built up there, which is about the same time his house was built, you know, it was a grass field, but these, these lots that are budding in the back of his have always been, I mean, single-family. So, I think at one point, whether it's now or whether it's 15 years from now or whatever it's going to be, we're going to have at least single-family back there.
Oh, no, I agree. I'm all for new neighbors, you know? Don't get me wrong, but I don't know that we need, you know, additional new neighbors on top of what was already, you know, planned and zoned.
I get it.
By all means, develop one.
No, and that's not what, that's not what I mean. The trick we're having here is, as you've heard us talk over and over again in town, is everybody wants affordable housing, but there's really no way to do that anymore without changing things up a bit. And that's where it really comes down.
I live on Tyler, and I've already seen an increase in traffic. I call it the Polk City bypass. Everybody's going down through our neighborhood to avoid the Casey's Corner and go on down Phillips to avoid the four-way stop out here, coming out over here on Forest. So, I've already seen that.
Right.
And they're always not as careful as we who live there, because I've lived up there for so long, and I know how many small children are up there.
Yeah.
In my neighborhood, there's no sidewalks, so those small children are in the street, whether we like it or not, and a huge concern of mine. But I don't think it's, it's not the people who live up there that are doing this.
Right. Well, no, I agree with you there, too, but it's increasing traffic to the neighborhood, so...
Yeah, I don't know that this one, I don't see this being an increase to either Tyler or Phillips. Do you? I mean, certainly not Phillips.
Just Phillips from Bridge Road, Bridge Road to Edgewater is the only time, I think...
Well, that's, that's the question I have, is, maybe, I don't know who owns this, but why wouldn't we take, not my plan, why wouldn't we take Edgewater to Parker?
Who eventually go? This is just this plan. And you've already called for the construction of Edgewater.
Well, the, the reason I say that, though, is these single-family lots here aren't going to be developed anyway for a while, the way I understand it, or maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Which ones?
On the, back to Tyler to his house?
If, we would do the whole thing at once.
Okay.
That's the plan.
The reason I'm wondering is because a major traffic disaster right now is Tyler and Bridge Road. I mean, you'll sit there, it seems like eternity to get on down there, and it's also two blind corners. I mean, to the left, you can't see over the berm. To the right, it's pretty hard now. I'm just wondering why we wouldn't push the traffic the other way. I don't know. It's not my specialty.
You do have a development agreement with Bruce Loveco for Edgewater, to get Edgewater from the end of this plat to this street. You've actually called that. He's put in, which we're accepting tonight, the sanitary sewer and water main for that future street, and the stormwater, storm sewer in the paving has yet to go in, but that would happen, he honestly, like, until this project moves forward, it would have been a street to nowhere, so...
Right, I mean, he shouldn't have done it, then, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, it, when, when we get us, you know, assuming this moves forward, we get to the point of construction, we'll make sure we're working with Bruce so that he's bringing his, his project, and you'd have that through a connection over to Parker.
So, just time, okay.
Well, and along those same lines, and getting back to Dan's original comments, comprehensive plans in the past had Davis Street going through, but we know that's not going to happen now, which would have been a big, big relief, but that...
That was a change that was made by Bruce's, the development to the west.
Absolutely.
Said no to that with, you know, so I don't want to penalize these guys for, for that.
No, no, I'm, and we've, we've talked about that, but it's just, my point is that we've changed comprehensive plans in the past.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to be heard for or against the amendment?
I'd like to point out, just one thing, I'm Todd Drake with Drake Homes, and as far as the traffic concern, right now, everyone is coming down Roosevelt, I'm guessing, going over here and then down Tyler, whereas if we open up the street, they're going to be coming down this street and then going over and then out that way, which is going to relieve a lot of pressure right there. And then also the transition we're making, these existing single-family homes, it's going to be exact same product except a lot newer and nicer behind them. So, we're the ones that are taking, making the transition from single-family to the higher density. We're basically eating up all that on our property and taking that on ourselves.
When he asked for the, the tapos, is there something that shows that the water would be diverted from his property? I mean, that is, that is a low spot. I know what he's talking about it.
That's all Caleb Hamlin. We, we had come up with a plan to deal with that back when this plan was originally looked at, and so, really, on that border there, and again, we'll re-verify all that information and continue to go through the process, but I do recall having to set an intake in the rear yards to help make sure we collect those waters properly in the backyards of, in the Snake of the Woods up here, and I can't recall exactly where. We'll go through all those details again and make sure we get that properly taken care of, so that's not an issue.
And then what would happen to the, and maybe you don't know right now, what would happen to the trees on that tree line?
Well, it's one of the things that came up in the neighborhood meeting we had in August with, with all the folks that showed up, was those trees, and, you know, some were, well, they're scrap trees, I don't really care, and some were like, I kind of like them. So, our plan is, is there's going to be some that's going to have to go just because of the work we're going to do. If we can keep them and they're not a liability, they're not a dead tree that's leaning or something, we, we haven't, it doesn't gain us anything to take them out. Our intent is to keep everything we can. So, we want to be, we want to be smart about that to the degree we can, help folks out if it's a problematic tree, take that down, and if it's not a problematic tree and it's in good shape, we'll, we'll try and keep it in. Todd even suggested maybe even trimming it up a little bit if it needed to make it a little bit more desirable. So, I'm trying to be as good of a neighbor there as we can on that issue.
I'm not, you know, I know you've built a great home. That's not the issue. I'm not, you know, I know you've built a great home, that's not the issue, it's just I know from living up in there that's been an issue, or a concern, I should say, for whoever buys the property, whether it's you or somebody else, or if you sell it, um, you know, would keep it that way, because.
The trees, you mean?
Well, I just mean, they're just concerned about what's behind them, just like everybody is, you know, regardless of where you're at.
Right. Um, yeah, and from our point of view, we wanna keep every tree that we can, because that's a huge selling point when we go to sell on those trees. And we also talked about, I don't know what the ordinance is now, but maybe planting two trees back there under, while we're doing the construction, instead of the normal one in front or one in back. But just try to keep that look up.
Anyone else present who wishes to be heard for or against the amendment?
Yes. Ron Hammond, 930 Tyler, and so I'm a neighbor of Jason. Again, I did come up here to, to cast aspersions against anyone, especially you folks, but it seems to me, is if you did this plan and you're calling for more affordable housing, I presume that the plan has other areas of town that is to be developed for multiple housing, IEPUD or, or higher-density housing. And so therefore, hopefully, you've planned for that already. Um, if these folks or whoever owned this property and it was developed around, and you guys or whomever was on the council at the time said, "Okay, that development messed up a street that now affects them," I mean, that's not good for them, but hopefully they would have, if they were the landowner, they would have taken notice of that. And so, um, it looks to me, quickly, from what I've read and, and one of your comments, I think it was Ron, the original game plan of being zoned R1A and PUD together, um, gives me the impression, from what I read, is the original PUD use was, it's gonna be single-family housing with some natural areas, a lot, a lot for drainage and that sort of thing. So I, too, am all about making profit. I, I don't wanna, you know, you know, clamp anyone down, but it seems to me that this thing has been on a planning mode, uh, and maybe some things have changed over the years, but we're going from, uh, what I envision as a single-family environment with possibly some natural area to a higher-density situation. So unless there's, you know, and again, I, I hate taking the probability, but if you look at a, a four-to-one versus a five-to-one, um, I'm not sure that that totally wipes out any probability that these or any other builders can make. And again, I'm not trying to, to take, to squash their and their ideas. Um, but it's, you know, I just bought this house three years ago, and it sounds like the houses that will be developed right behind me if this goes through, I'd be willing to sell my house tomorrow for that price, and I realize that these houses would be newer, probably a little bit larger than mine. Uh, and I appreciate that part of the, the, the game plan. But the higher density behind it, and amen, I have grandchildren, and some of these people run up and down Tyler, I'd like to just shake them, because they evidently don't have children, or if they do, they don't care about their children. Uh, so the, the traffic is a, a big issue. So I guess, um, to Dan's point, um, you know, if you've got a, a game plan put together, uh, I'm a certified financial planner, so I'm into planning, and my clients change their plans all the time, and we have to, have to go with the flow to some degree. Um, and sometimes it's things that we can't control. Um, but if you guys really put in a lot of time, you're planning, and you do have other areas of town that you have developed or have set aside for developing a more high-density population situation, I think it makes sense to stick with the plan. So, and again, I'm not trying to squash you guys.
You live on Tyler?
Yeah, 930. Right, thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Anyone else present who wishes to be heard for or against the amendment?
Does the gazebo space, does that qualify for the dedicated parkland, or do they not?
Um, we haven't really calculated what the dedicated park, you know, they may have a payment in lieu of parkland dedication, uh, 'cause it would be a private as opposed to public, so they would not be dedicating that gazebo to the city.
I see that on here. Sorry.
Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
I wanna say one thing.
Go ahead.
It's just that the Drakes have, have been trying real hard to work with us. They wanna develop this ground, they wanna do something in Polk City, and they have, I consider, gone above and beyond. That doesn't mean we're getting exactly what we want, but they have gone above and beyond to try and work with us to get something done up there.
Based on everything I've heard, I'd echo the same.
Appreciate it.
I assume you're making that motion to close this?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Did I say that?
Yeah, you did. I heard you say it. Roll call.
Lee.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution 2016-104, amending Polk City Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. Need a motion.
So moved.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
No.
Motion carries. Item C, public hearing on rezoning request of 7.62 acres for Lakewood's plat one, plat one from R1A to PUD, and PUD to PUD. Time to close the regular meeting and open public hearing on the rezoning request of 7.62 acres for Lakewood plat wood, plat one from R1A and PUD to PUD. When was the notice published?
November 4.
Any written comments?
No, sir.
Perfect. This time and last, staff to make a report.
Um, I think that Caleb did a very good job of going over that on the, the future land use side of it.
I would agree. Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against this rezoning? I need a motion to close the public hearing and review unless you have a question.
I just, I wanna comment that, that, uh, when we made the decision to change this to R1A, that wasn't very well received either. And, 'cause R1 has an 80-foot side or frontage, and we changed this down to 65-foot, which is an R1A, but not without a lot of protest. Well, I've been living on an R, uh, that's not an R1A, but it's a 65-foot lot for 48 years, and it hasn't stunted my growth, but I, I feel like I'm in the minority in Polk City. And where I grew up, which was in East Des Moines, by the way.
You got it, Jim.
You could, you could reach out and touch on it, because that's how close we were. And sometimes we did. That's all I have to say.
I got you. Any other comments for or against?
Yes.
I'd, I'd just like to, uh, thank Drakes for, for working with the city. I, as I said, having been up there since that neighborhood was conceived, I know those first nine of the single-family lots here were paramount. I, I don't doubt you do great work, no question about it, but I have to say, if those nine were PUD, I wouldn't have been able to vote for this, um, 'cause those people deserved at least what they were.
You agree?
Um, and so I think that buffer is extremely important in this. And I wouldn't, you know, I like the idea of two trees instead of one in the front and one in the back. I think whatever we can do to build that buffer, because that is, that is a huge concern for the people on the street, and they are right. That is, that street is like the Autobahn up there. Um, and that's not your fault, but it's, they have to contend with something in the front and the back, is what I'm thinking.
Well, hopefully we can release some of our traffic and keep as many trees as possible and.
And if you would be open to the, moving a tree to the front or the back, I would be open to supporting that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't say it.
I just wanted to mention that, um, when the homes in Edgewater were built, that would be, was prior to 2006, this entire property was Zon C2. And it wasn't until March, so, so it was all commercial. So it would have been potentially a grocery store or something like that, a large commercial establishment in the backyards. It went to R1A in 2006.
I recall the paranoia for the first four years, everybody was worried, frankly so.
Yeah, I mean, it went quite a ways north. It encompassed that entire piece of property.
That's for the history. Yes.
Well, and that, and they're accomplishing something that we've, as long as I've sat up here, we have never wanted to put multifamily up against existing single-family, and so they have put in that row of houses, so that's not, but now I'm hearing that maybe we need two rows of buffers for the neighbors, but I just don't know if that's practical.
Well, then the problem is, is the person in the second row is gonna be mad.
Yeah. So you have to decide a starting point and ending point.
True. Any other comments? Yes, go ahead.
Quickly, I'm Chrissy Drake, and, okay, so this, people in the single-family, these what we're considering, we're calling villas, though, really, by all standards, are single-family ranch houses, that typically, um, people that are downsizing wanna be in which their kids are grown and gone. So actually, in a way, we are doing the double housing.
And I would, I would piggyback on what you're saying. If, if anybody's not sure what they're talking about, if you go to the north side of Wolf Creek up there, uh, if those houses had slightly bigger yards, you wouldn't know they're not a single-family or ranch.
Right. I mean, the only, the only thing different is that we're gonna maintain it, I mean, by an association, otherwise it's gonna look just like a single-family home. So that's what I wanted to say.
And we have two three-car units, sorry, these two units up here are three-car units, and the rest are two-car. So that kinda helps blend in.
So if I, I'm reading this right, it says minimum 16-foot minimum side setback. Is that between every one of those?
Yes, sir.
And that's the same thing as it is everywhere. You can have that in R1. You can have them within 16 feet of one another.
Right. For the, and for the people that I know that are here from Tyler Street, having known several of your neighbors over the years and knowing the same concerns you have, 'cause I'm not too far from there, I, I would take this setup, I'm telling you, I would take this setup over any of it I've heard until now. I'm not saying it's perfect, but I'm saying there's the other option that you could, you could easily get those changed to commercial, because there's a want for that in the town. If I was in that position and I'm only half a block from you, I would take that any day of the week over the latter. I mean, it may not be perfect, but it's a good compromise.
Well, I do hope that, that, you know, talked about some of the traffic concerns, that for those of you on Tyler, that, that should help. Now, I'm concerned by making Roosevelt, and I used to live on Roosevelt, uh, even more of a stretch, uh, but, but that's an enforcement issue, and that's not, uh, any of the rationale for my residence here. It's, that's a density thing, but, um, and I don't know if we've gotten to the point where it stops saying going in and where and all that, but, um, again, my, hopefully, for, for those of you on Tyler, when this gets done and even with the addition, by, by the fact that Roosevelt's gonna go through, that should, from a traffic standpoint, uh, help you guys out now. I don't know that it offsets the density, but just to be clear.
Any other comments? Need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Lee.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item D, consider motion to approve the first reading, ordinance 2016-2700, approving rezoning 7.62 acres for Lakewood's plat one to PUD. Need a motion. So moved. Discussion? Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. There's still got a couple more readings. See you at the next one.
Good, thanks.
And Jason and, and Ron, thank you guys for coming out, too, especially if you guys didn't feel like you were having your voice heard the last time. Appreciate it, guys. Take care. Item two, 12 Oaks, plat four. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution 2016-107, approving an agreement to complete hearing.
Uh, this is, um, you should have a copy in your agenda, and there should be an updated one that's in front of you. The updated one has just got the numbers in it. Um, this is fairly common that we have an agreement to complete when we're getting this time of the year. However, most of these items that are set for completion will probably be done within the week. But we can't have council work with retroactive without something in their hand.
And the updated, with the numbers, is just item three and four?
Item three and item four.
Okay, just to be clear. Did that answer your question, Jim? We, what, what does it differ?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2016-107.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, no, excuse me, I was thinking of something else. It's not in this agreement.
Okay. Need a second.
I have a motion for A, I need a second.
Um, I guess I'll, I'll second that, and then I guess I'll go back to the question I was gonna ask, of what, there's something in their covenants that is in direct violation with our ordinances. Our ordinances rule. Is they, that specifically for the noise, they're going to allow 60 decibels at 6 o'clock in the morning, and our noise ordinance, I do believe, is from 10 until 7. Is that not correct? Yes, but you gotta understand that restrictive covenants, and you may know this, are enforced by the neighbors. Right. So we, we would not enforce that. So we're just gonna sit here and allow them to carry on with something that we know is in violation of our ordinance?
Our ordinance will control if there's an issue. Our ordinance will control. We don't, we don't usually review the covenants. They give us a copy, so we know what is in them, but that's an enforceability issue with the property owners, but our ordinances will always trump any covenants that are there.
Right, so, so we can't even ask them to change something that we know is in violation? I'd be more than happy to change it. I mean, you're gonna have. It's just a boilerplate from, uh, from, uh, I mean, the things that you look at in covenants are setbacks, really, the amounts of stone. You're specifically allowing chainsaws and all of that stuff to be run during those hours. Somebody fires up a chainsaw at 6 o'clock in the morning next to me, I'm out there with a big hammer. Hopefully that's longer than a chainsaw.
Where are you, am I missing that? Where are you reading that at, about the six?
It's in the covenants.
I have a question before we move on. In this new, uh, new paper that's put out, am I counting this right, that there are 15 things that have need to be, or did you address that? Have they been all been? It's contractor items, engineering items, developer items.
That, that's what the check covers.
That's what?
That's what's covered by that agreement to complete.
But they're not completed now.
Not 100%. They're, again, probably by the end of this week. Very, very soon. And then what, what'll happen is, once those are completed, we'll come back and we'll bring a resolution for you guys to accept the public improvements. So that'll be at the next meeting or meeting thereafter. When the next.
I don't see that.
In terms of the drawing and easements and those kinds of things, Ron, those are all the.
And the checks cover the outstanding issues?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Got a motion in a second. I'll take a roll.
Lee.
Yes.
Mordini.
Same.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution 2016-108, approving 12 Oaks final plat four. Anything else to add on this?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, take a motion.
Motion to approve resolution 2016, uh, 108.
Need a second.
It seemed to be a man, second.
There you go. There you go. Thanks for making it. Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Mordini.
Same.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, consider motion to approve resolution 2016-109, accepting edge water drive improvements on public water main and sewer line.
This is a part of the site plan that was presented and approved by Lakeside Fellowship and approved by city council.
Thank you.
The water main is a twelve-inch water main that goes along Brick Road and is parallel to Brick Road, and that is ready to be accepted by the city. And as far as I know, there's no outstanding item.
One thing was, you described Lakeside, and what we're accepting now is edge water. So there's two projects.
What, where did I misspeak?
You described number four, but we're on number three, I think.
You're just covering us on four, so once you describe number three.
I just jumped ahead.
Sorry, that's right. You're gonna save us time on number four, so just explain number three.
The edge water drive is, again, public improvements that go into the Lakeside Fellowship Church. They will tie up to the public improvements that will be being proposed tonight that you saw in Lakewood's plat one.
This makes no mention of where that's gone, the water line and the sewer line was in there, but it makes no mention of where that paving is gonna be.
The paving is forthcoming. We wanna make sure that we don't have a road going to nowhere.
Oh, I see. In other words, you're waiting on what was approved.
Council has already ordered the road to be done, and Bruce Lefkoe is quite familiar with that, as well as Todd and Christie Drake with Drake Homes. They both know it. And as soon as there is an approval for development of that land, the streets will be put in.
Okay, thank you.
And so the, all parties were notified when that they needed to put the road in?
Approximately one year ago. Would have been right after the first site plan for Lakeside Fellowship was approved, which showed that, which actually showed that road, and there was an agreement prior to that that showed where that cost was coming from.
Yep, and up until now, there's been really no activity.
You got it.
Okay. Any more questions? Take a motion.
Lane.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, consider motion to approve resolution 2016-110, accepting Lakeside Fellowship Church improvements on the public water main.
What's this all about? Motion to approve 2016-110.
Second. Roll call.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five, consider motion to approve resolution 2016-106, approving Brick Gentry Law Firm attorney invoice for September 2016, services in the amount of $4,145. Take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Mordini.
No.
Motion carries. Item six, consider motion to approve canceling. Go ahead. Yep.
Just one comment on that. I do, I noticed that you didn't take the opportunity to point this out, but I will do so on your behalf. If you notice in that very detailed bill, all things related to the Pine Ridge entrance were at no charge.
I did see that.
As was proposed to them, that should be, so.
I did see that, and I appreciate it. I thought maybe we were gonna discuss it, but I wasn't gonna belabor it. My reason for voting no is this is the third issue on, at least that I can remember, that questions have come up with. And I don't care whether we're one person or thirty people. I just think a law firm owes their clients, especially in the days where, not your firm, but other law firms are viewed as snakes, to actually represent their client. In this one, I think we had no representation. I think in the Tony Herman saga, had certain people up here not pushed it, we'd still be dealing with them and have in our houses and everything messed with. And I think the golf course is another example, and we all make mistakes, but at what point do you just say, okay? I mean, we always say, well, we're gonna do this better this time, this better this time. Guess what? Next council meeting, we write a check. I just think sometimes you have to highlight issues to seek correction, so. Thank you for removing that. Item six, consider motion to approve canceling the December 26, 2016 council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Lane.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Wow.
Anderson.
Yes.
I only wish you would have voted no. Item seven, consider motion to approve replacing the handrail in front of the historical museum entrance in the amount not to exceed $8,350. Please.
Second.
Yes.
Did, I saw your quotes was in there. Did you contact Lister Concrete and not hear back from him?
I would have to ask because Randy is the one that went out for these calls.
I'm just going by the fact that they did the one on the other side of the, yeah, community center, and did an excellent job, so.
I don't wanna say, but I believe that there was no response back. But let me, let me ask that question, because I know he went out to three, and I know Lister was brought up.
Okay.
And I will get back with you on that.
Okay, thank you. And well, my concern is that we approved this tonight, and it's done, yeah, so.
Well, can you just do a not to exceed? You better not to exceed on it.
If they didn't, if they didn't respond, shame on them. But if we didn't, if we didn't contact them, then shame on us.
We can, we can certainly get a hold of them. You know, the railing is out there, it's propped up. I don't know. I'm trying to think if weather would beat us here, but I don't think so. So I think we have time if that's the case.
But we're not accepting, yeah, I mean, we're just saying a not to exceed eighty-three-fifty on it, so.
Yeah, our agenda item does not identify an entity to who's gonna be doing the work.
So if they come in cheaper, you wanna use them?
Okay.
Yeah, it was worth it at that point, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
There we go.
Roll call. Problem solved.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, consider motion to approve the third reading of ordinance 2016-2600, approving rezoning of point five-three-three acres with an RTM plat one from U1 to M1. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, mayor's report, just a couple of quick things. They are progressing on our business record publication. We've had some interviews done and a couple of other things that I think we're still shooting to the end of the year, and what I've seen so far is coming together well. And on the fifth, before the election, Congressman Young was out in Polk City, and we visited a few local small business owners, fire department, police department. He was impressed with Polk City. It was a great visit, and I really appreciate him being here, and he is gonna come back for some more office pieces.
I didn't get it.
What? I know. I was waiting for it. Councilman Moore couldn't be here tonight. Mr. Mordini. I have nothing other than, you know, we've got a lot of big things coming across the agenda here, and I'm sure there's more to come, and I, I don't know, it's not a one-size-fits-all. You know, even OJ has to close his hands to get the glove to fit sometimes, but it all works out.
I never know what you're gonna throw in.
Councilman Sarchet.
Does that bring it up to neighborhood group? Go ahead. So I think since we met the last time we met, it was the full neighborhood, Neighborhood Citizen Group, I keep saying backwards. But even more excited to work with these guys. We have a representative here, came up with a great idea to do a meet and greet, and really, so we're gonna, we got everybody together with the idea, pushing off with this and making everybody aware. I know one of the groups set up a Facebook page. It's got close to two hundred people in it already. So again, we talked about this, but just another way to bring people together in the neighborhoods, and hopefully, as a byproduct of that core goal, also get some feedback for us. And when Gary reminded me to bring this up, pointed out that he was excited about where we're going, and I think that I share those feelings, and it's easy to be excited when you have a group of people that are excited also and really wanna push this off. So one of the things that they brought up to leverage the square lighting here a couple of weeks, to a meet and greet with those folks, so very optimistic. It is still an experiment, and I'm still gonna blame Gary if it fails until his idea. But I think we'll be a fun experiment nonetheless. So ahead.
Councilman Anderson.
I just wanna tag on with what Councilman Sarchet just said. I've had a lot of questions about what is this, what's it talking about. I've just been telling people, it's another place for you to express your views, another place to be heard. That's all I have.
Lane.
Just a couple of things. One relating to the Neighborhood Citizens Group, or whichever way it is. That gentleman that I had put forth, he's, there's a reason he didn't respond, so I'll just leave it at that. And the other thing kind of came to mind when Ron was commenting about there's no sidewalks up there. When I started here fifteen years ago, we not only had a street repair plan, but we had a sidewalk plan. And we haven't done any sidewalks since we did the one out here going up to Casey's Corner. I guess I was wondering if that still existed somewhere, covered in dust, or if it could be revised, or, I mean, that's, I'd think.
To be honest, I'm drawing a blank here. I don't know if we, I'll have to look for a plan, to be honest with you. I'm not sure we had an actual.
I know what you're talking about. It was talked about. I don't know where, I don't know what the plan was or where. I remember specifically there was a plan to take it all the way up there. I don't know where it went, but.
Right. Pretty handy.
Yeah.
I haven't seen a plan since I started.
Okay, all right.
Also, there are a couple areas right up there in that neighborhood where the sidewalk doesn't go all the way to the corners. At one time, we had plans, actually got a neighbor to move the fence so we could cake it along Tyler Street as far as Davis. And I don't know whatever happened to that.
Yeah, I remember. Since the day after, we did the one going up to the schools, and then that one going up that way, and we haven't done any sidewalks. At least that haven't been in conjunction with road.
The only thing we're doing is when, you know, development-driven, we're making sure those sidewalks and those agreements are.
Or the street upgrades, we're.
Right, right.
Trying to get sidewalks in there.
So those go outside of those.
There's, and they're just, I mean, in the scheme of things, very small, up there around the Davis-Tyler corner. It's just, it's just a couple lot lengths that would complete that, just in that area. Don't look so covered, Jimmy.
I'm not, I have had, what I was going to say is, I've had a few folks call in that live up around the school that have expressed a concern that the sidewalk doesn't go through on the north side of the road between King's Place and Oakwood. But it's an empty lot, and it's part of the development agreement, so. But I haven't heard any complaints about any other areas in town, at least coming into City Hall.
Well, I think about that one up there, those up there on Tyler and Davis, because there's two school buses stop there every morning and every afternoon, so.
You just gave them a task. Do you remember that office you played?
And also, I know in our, my reading for this, one of the developers had asked for a sidewalk waiver because they're being built with the houses. Well, what if one of these lots don't sell for two or three years? You have sidewalk grass, sidewalk grass. I assume, since I did not read anywhere an agreement to, that we're waiving that requirement, that it has not been waived?
No, that's on 12 Oaks.
12 Oaks, yeah.
It's a cul-de-sac. Typically, in the past, I mean, since I've been here, councils always waive the require, which you don't have to do, but waive requirement for sidewalk bonds for sidewalks where there's homes. One exception is if, when Lost Lakes comes in front of you, there is a sidewalk on North Broadway that went in in advance of the homes. But none of those homes have driveways across them. I mean, and that's part of the reason that they're reluctant to put a sidewalk on an empty lot, is because when they'll come in, then you'll take, cut through, you know, the contractors will probably break it up as they're moving the home, or, you know, with their construction equipment, and then you've also got a section of it that will go away because of the driveway. So, I mean, it's certainly, you can require, you have to, but it is within three years, so.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, this policy hasn't worked out very well. Somebody who walks the streets of the city, I know that there's, you go, there's sidewalk, and then no sidewalk, and then sidewalk again. If they're only being laid as the houses are being done.
Well, and I don't remember the exact wording or how it's enforced or anything, but for a while there, we were not requiring sidewalks on streets in developments at all. And that's gone away. We don't.
All right, yeah. All right, I guess. Anything else? Okay. Moving on. Item nine, council discussion.
I have been contacted to provide where we are with DART, and our, one of our supervisors, Steve Anort, is here, who also represents DART, and Amanda with the DART staff is here. A lot of you have seen that other communities, Mitchellville as one, and Ankeny is now talking about it, have removed, or are talking about removing themselves from, and Carlisle's being another one, removing themselves from the agreement. As part of your agenda packet, you have a agreement, the 28E agreement, that was signed by Polk City approximately six years ago. And also, you have the count, the citywide contribution that has been made towards DART in the last six, including this year fiscal year, and how that's based off the valuation and what the tax rate was. Very simply, this year, that tax will generate from Polk City taxpayers $108,761. Since inception, or since FY 2011-12, the total has come to $366,235.43. Now, this is not money that the city itself pays, but it is money that the taxpayers with inside the city have a levy that they pay, and when it goes to the county, it is divvied up, goes to DART as well as to the other taxing entities, including Polk City. There is an eighteen-month removal clause that is in the agreement, and if, if Polk City decided to remove themselves from this, you will need to be proactive within the next, by the end of the year, gives you two more council meetings to give notice in the past resolution, and to send letter to all of the affected jurisdictions. The reason that's important is because it's the eighteen months, it would take that long before the next fiscal year. So the residents in Polk City would pay for the 1718 fiscal year, but would not be in for the 1819 if, in fact, council decided to remove themselves. I'm bringing those things forward because those are the important items that are in front of us, as well as the service that Polk City receives. And it's just a general discussion. At the end of the day, if council asks for a proposed letter and a proposed resolution to remove, I can place that on any agenda that is so directed.
Yes.
Do you have ridership numbers for Polk City available?
On average, the last couple of years, there's been about five hundred rides a year, approximately.
Five hundred rides a year, so.
Yeah, that's not, not a definite. There's some more research I needed to do, but today I was able to get an average of around five.
And those numbers are the on-call service that's exclusive to Polk City?
Right, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a regular route. What I'm getting at is we have approximately five-
What I'm getting at is we have approximately 500 rides, at $100,000 of taxes, we're paying about $5,000 a ride.
We don't know the number of people that go from Polk City to Ankeny.
Not very equitable, I don't think.
Those are, so, thanks for coming tonight. You guys came in June and we, we got figures for Grimes, Granger and Polk City, but $500 figure, 500 figure is specific to Polk City?
I will have to confirm on that, except today that was an estimate, so I will have, I will double check and we will get you some more specifics.
That reminds me, about $2,000 a ride, I guess. If I was a better contractor.
Yes, when you were out in June, we were grouped in, because I know this question came up too, and I know we've talked about this offline as well, but we're grouped in with Grimes, Granger and us, I think, the numbers that you provided. Is that right? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that my head is right. Yes, go ahead, I'll let you speak.
The one thing I do want to mention is the formula, right now it's, the tax I be for Polk City is just under 58 cents per thousand. At our most recent commission meeting, we made a decision to freeze the small communities at that, at their current rate for the next three years. Formula's based on number of miles of service and percentage of the management of the DART service. So as we look in the next three years, and we're, we're doing a total reevaluation of DART service, and I, I can't promise you that Polk City's going to have more service tomorrow than it has today, but we really have to reevaluate what the tax levy is today, what we need to do. We're seeing an increase of ridership every year, just almost, just short of 5 million rides in the Des Moines region, and that percentage is up greatly from where we were six years ago before we came, became the regional system. It's a, it's a growth in process. And we need every, every community to be involved in creating a regional transit system that's going to help the economic future of the Des Moines area. Is it going to help, is it going to affect Polk City right now, today? I can't say that, but if we all stay actively involved in building a good transit system, we will be a, a more viable community. Businesses are looking at, is there a bus route that's going past my business to be able to get people from where they can afford to live to where they need to go to work? And so, so I guess my, my thought to you is, is I hope you consider that the value of, of the $100,000 to the entire region is very valuable.
Do we know what the, like you mentioned the 58 cents, do you know what the, what Des Moines, for instance, charged?
Say again?
You, you mentioned us for 58 cents. What was the, what does Des Moines pay?
I could give you a little history on, on the levy and you could add in where you want to. When the, when DART was formed as a regional transit authority, all the member communities came in where they originally were at that time, and then they've all risen together in the idea of being a region. At the same time, and the DART levy is kept at 95 cents of 1,000, and our first member community, Mr. Heights, hit that. Des Moines is, I believe, approximately 83 cents, but they buy theirs down for their members.
They're pretty close to 95.
So they would be, without their buy down, they would be close to 95, 95 cents. And one thing I wanted to add to Supervisor Ben Ort's comments was just, we have some information as part of what we're here to talk about in, in the spring and summer as we were doing research on the planning for the future. We did do some non-riders surveys, and because part of what we know is that riders want public transit, but what do non-riders think? And so, in Northwest Polk County, we asked non-riders to rank transportation investments. 38% ranked improving public transit as number one, 32% widening existing roads, followed far behind by building new roads, improving the sidewalk network, improving the bicycle network. And so what we're seeing is that there is a desire for public transit. We know for recruiting and retention purposes and getting to jobs, it is a top priority for employers. So certainly, the, the service isn't exactly the same across the region, but it really is meant to be a regional service in terms of economic development. And as Supervisor said, we would like to, we're working to look at how we expand those plans and what those future options look like.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate those comments and the, you know, Supervisor or all our supervisors for that matter, we have an excellent group there, we couldn't ask for any better. This is, I don't think any of our comments are geared at any of you. But I think what's real hard for small communities, especially ours, to sometimes stomach is we are constantly being asked, in my opinion, to subsidize Des Moines, you know, whether it's their law enforcement program with their SWAT team or not, it's not a, another great group, don't get me wrong. DART, which we see, at least in my opinion, very, very, very little benefit for the money going in, or others. However, you know, you mentioned working as a community. We've been struggling for years to have a bike trail that everybody in Des Moines wants to connect the lakes out here, but I have a feeling if we went onto Des Moines and said, "We need to pay your percentage of that," they'd laugh us right out the front door. And this is something they'd use. All the trails going out here, we don't get any cooperation from Des Moines, even though they're using them. I'm not sure that Des Moines pays our firefighters when they go up to Saylorville for their calls, even though they're using them, but we are constantly being asked to subsidize another community, and it, it may only seem like $100,000, but we're a town of 5,000 versus whatever all the metro is together at this point. And it's also somewhat bothersome when we don't have a route here, but yet we're looking at pretty grand plans, plugging in green cars and things like that, which is neat. Don't get me wrong, it's very neat, but how is a community this small supposed to accept that and when we're putting in money that we don't even see a bus come through town to pick us up? I mean, it's hard, at least from the people I talk to, that's what's going through their minds, of why are we always writing a check? And I, and I understand, I understand the group effort, I truly do, but some of these are really, really hard to bite off, you know? And, you know, if Des Moines was saying, "Oh yeah, we'd love to be part of all your projects up there, here's your check," I think it'd be a lot easier to accept for a lot of people, but it all seems too often that she's on the other side.
And the formula, the way, the way that formula is, every city is paying a different amount. So West Des Moines is 90-ish, Ankeny is-
But I think that's, if you look at that though, they're probably getting 90% of the ridership. I mean, if you go downtown Des Moines, there's DART buses that literally almost run you over.
All roads because of the, because of hub and spoke, and, or almost all the roads end up going downtown, I guess.
Right, so I mean, if I, for instance, if I work downtown and I want to get on a bus here in town and go downtown with other people in the Des Moines area that are doing the same, could I do that?
You can bargain ride to DMAC and-
But I mean, for the average person, you know, they don't want to have a 45-minute commute for something they can do in 20. I mean, I, I get what you're saying, it's a great concept. I just think until everybody wants to play ball, I don't think a small town, Iowa should have to keep writing the check for large town. And I, I appreciate everything the supervisors and that, even that group does. I mean, it's phenomenal.
We have supervisors who write super checks.
You do. And it's, you, supervisors have, have supported this council more than we can ever say thank you enough for-
And we need to.
Yeah.
I digress for a second, but if there's, if there are trail plans or anything like that, we want to be a tape, conservationist. We're engaged, I digress, I'm sorry.
No, and that's, and I'm, and I'm not saying that's a supervisor, that's not a supervisor. What I'm getting at though is, the argument that's many times used is, in some of these as well, you know, you should help with this particular community's project because it's good for everybody, but yet, when we're in that same basket, if you will, it's like you hear crickets. And it's not the supervisor issue, I, I don't mean that at all.
I don't either, but I know it is.
You know where I'm coming from.
It is a Des Moines issue right now.
So, from my perspective, I, I, I'm not predating any DART decision on any other group. I, I understand your point, and I think each situation warrants its own decision, and I fully respect the, the sort of mission statement that you guys outlined. I, that, in order for us to change, and we're a part of the Des Moines metro community, whether we admit that or not, and, and fully respect where that plan helps out, where DART helps out with that plan, and, and do want to be a part of all the, you know, a part of the community, however you define that. For me, it just comes back to how much is our role, and, and I appreciate, I guess, the, the freeze. It falls, that piece to me falls a little bit on deaf ears when, if I'm doing my math correctly, since 2012, our rates have increased almost 200%. So, I just, I, I really struggle with, and, and I know it's, it's struggle to get numbers, but to be honest with you, I, I mean, if that on-call, which also, what costs 250 when you call it, correct?
$3.50.
Okay, so if, if that's coming on average, almost twice a day, I'm not seeing it. And so, I guess, to me, this at least warrants that letter, but a willingness on our part to, to see where the, the plan evolves. And, but again, fully recognize the, the tougher spot that we're putting you in by even having this discussion, let alone action. But to me, it, we have to make the best decision for the people in our community, as you do, you know, talking about Polk County, and, and struggle with, is it right to, to pay upwards of 100 and some thousand dollars just to be a part of a community when I, I don't see the value for it? And so, again, I, to me, I, I would like to see a, a resolution coming back next time to, to start that 18-month window, have some more discussions. I don't know if we need a motion to do that, and, but that's where I'm at. But again, thank you for coming. I, I'm, my eyes and ears are open as we move forward, but again, if, if we weren't looking at this, I'd look at this in the same fashion that we had with some very tough conversations we had last fall and the, the blowback we got from that, but if we're not looking at options to, to be responsible for the taxpayers' money in this community, whether that comes through us or goes around us or whatever, we wouldn't be doing our job. So that's where I'm coming from, but certainly missed this.
Well, and we certainly have, we changed, we changed our thinking since I got on this council. We definitely want to be part of the metro, metropolitan area, we've tried to participate, we've, my feeling is, gone out of our way to be a part of all, whether it be DART or Metropolitan Planning Organization or whatever, we've gone out and did it, but this increases us, you know, we started at $20,000 a year, and now we're up to over $100,000 a year. And yes, we've had some population growth, but I don't think we've had increased use.
I just have one follow-up question. You said you froze for the smaller communities at 58 cents. Was that before or after the other community started dropping out?
Before.
So in real-
It, it was simultaneously with Mitchellville, but that was not, we, actually, we didn't know Mitchellville was having that discussion. I'm not, I'm the supervisor there, but I'm not the commissioner there, so I was, I was caught a little off-guard with that kind of, but we've been having this conversation for about three months, and it's the small communities, it's wherever they are, you're at 58, that's where you're frozen, Bondrand, I think, is 53, that's where they're frozen, Polk County, any corporate, Polk County is 53. So it's those, that's small, small tier of counties. So, no, we weren't, we, or yes, we were talking about it before we heard that there was going to be.
Right, so with a smaller pool, it'd be very realistic to assume that if those prices are going to unfreeze?
No, well, definitely not for three years.
The commission voted in their November meeting to freeze the rates for the small communities for three years.
Which at another meeting, they can very well vote to unfreeze some sense that the pool of people paying in has dropped down, you're going to have to charge more for what people are left. They're only, that's simple math.
I don't think we'll unfreeze, it might change what other cities are paying. But I think we're pretty locked into, as long as I'm a commissioner, on the DART commission, and I'm at, I'm at Mitchellville, Ankeny and Polk City, but as long as I'm a commissioner, my attitude doesn't change toward that. What, what we need to do, and what I'm working on, is trying to figure out a different funding mechanism for public transit in Iowa. We get just a little over a million dollars a year from the state for new equipment. You look, you look at Michigan, and Grand Rapids is a great example of a good transit system in that region versus Midors, their funding, quite, not the majority of their funding, but a big percentage of their funding comes from state legislature. We need to get some of those things changed. We need to get relief off of property tax. But right now, that's, that's our funding mechanism. 10 years ago, we got a lot more money from, from the feds for public transit. Well, it's come to the right and left coast, so we're having a more difficult time finding that funding that was easily gotten 10 years ago.
And the supervisor certainly wasn't alone in his sentiment about small cities. I, I don't, I know anyone on the commission currently, obviously I can't speak for them, but there was strong sentiment about freezing the member communities that it was, I believe it was, who knew this.
And I represent, as a supervisor, I represent Bondrand, Mitchellville, Altoona, Pleasant Hill, so I have, and as a, as a commissioner, I'm very sensitive to the, to the smaller communities. And I, and I represent Ankeny. Ankeny, they're, they have about a little over 8,000 rides a month with their, all the express service, and then tying in DMAC. But it is, their, their concerns are our concerns. We're fiddling around with property tax. Sorry, didn't mean to-
No, you're, no, you're good, no. I guess what I'd like to say is this, putting this on the agenda tonight was definitely a lot of discussion here as far as what we were going to do. I've been sitting in this chair now for three years, and I'll tell you, I've had this conversation countless times, whether it up here or people in town, and we've been able, for the most part, to just kind of say, "Well, we're going to see what happens, we're going to see what happens, we're going to see what happens." We spoke last week, I told you I wasn't sure where this was going to go, I spoke to Supervisor Brownell, I spoke to several others, others as far as, you know, the best way to handle this. Obviously, the article in the paper sparked some of this conversation with us and realizing kind of where we're at in, in the time of year, and, you know, if we don't make a decision on this letter now, if we wait until January, for example, well, we might as well wait another year. My real hope with this, and going down this road, is I believe this is where we're heading, is we can work backwards into this. We can work together and try and, I mean, I don't think this is the end of it. I hope that, you know, this doesn't stop the relationship and stop the opportunity to figure out how we can, how DART can best serve Polk City and Carlisle and Mitchellville and Ankeny and everybody else who's clearly having these conversations because we're not alone. And so, you know, I don't want this to just, here's the letter, we're out. I want this to be, hey, here's the letter, let's talk.
And this Thursday at 5:30, and you've been in?
Yep, and I know Gary's going to be there for sure, unfortunately, I can't be due to-
All of the 19 entities that, that DART serves are meeting with the DART commission, and this is the conversation we got to have.
If, if this already exists, I'm sorry, but has DART ever considered doing like a, for lack of better words, an a la carte program where, even I realize these numbers are based on a lot of different things, I feel like should any community, it doesn't matter if it's Polk City, Mitchellville, whoever, there are smaller communities that use very little of the services, they paying for a watered-down version of the same big plan, when really all we're using is a very minimal, I mean, and I, and I realize you're probably saying, "Well, we can't necessarily do that to be fair," but from a DART perspective, I would think that you would look at it, at least think about looking at it from, it's better to have something from this community than nothing. You know, I don't, I don't know, I'm not, I haven't talked to any of these guys on any of this, but for as little ridership as we have, you know, paying 20,000 is one thing, paying 110,000 is completely different, you know, but if we're paying for a cost that is more in line with what we're actually using, it'd probably be a lot easier for some of the small communities to get on board. Just a thought. Well, and I think part of the covers, conversations we've had too regarding the lack of ridership that we get in this community is a lack of knowledge. I think for the most part, DART's presence in Polk City's not known, right? I mean, unless people are turning over their statement and they're actually looking at the back of it and realizing that they are contributing into DART, they don't realize that, and I think for the most part, people don't even, in this community, don't understand we've got an on-call service. And I think that falls on both of us. It's not only you folks, but it's us as well. And so I think somehow, again, this is where we need to find a way to figure out how this is going to look. I don't know what it is, the importance of us and our position in the metro, I mean, this is, you know, that's, this is incredibly sensitive in that. this is, you know, that's, this is incredibly sensitive in that, but obviously, I think that this hopefully will spark the conversation, because you guys have come out and made a similar presentation, you know, the three years that I've been doing this, and before that, I saw it, you know, a number of other times, and so I think this will, hey, we're, you know, we want to sit down and talk, so, yes?
Just to address your suggestion, one of the things we've been asked by other communities, and has been a topic of discussion, if there is some sort of tiered system, where depending on the level of service, you fall a certain tier. One of the challenges we have in that is that levy tax cap, so it's hard within between 53 cents and 95 cents to find much in terms of tiers, so that comes back to really wanting to find a way to diversify revenue and be able to give us some more options in the future to meet some of the needs we're hearing.
Understand, just trying to throw us...
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
Well, and some of the communities that we visited, or some of the cities we visited with transit programs, some of the smaller communities contract. So I think we, this, these conversations are causing us to really stop the review. I was on, I was on the Metro Transit, so MTA, 11 years ago, I was part of the group that formed the Regional Transit Authority 10 years ago, and went through a lot of growing pains. One of the big issues that we had 10 years ago was, we don't want, to your point, we don't want to underwrite Des Moines, if we're going to do this, we're going to blow the system. So six years ago, we blew the system. There's much more service to West Des Moines, to the, to the employment corps, who's in Urbandale, and we're starting to elevate service to Pleasant Hill, because they need connecting, people who need a job to where the jobs are. So, and Des Moines consequently, their service, their, their number of service miles decreased. So we're having the same conversation with Des Moines, saying, "We're paying too much for the service we're getting." So it's...
And I sympathize, yeah.
It's like crazy, it's been, it's been a really unique conversation for me the last four or five months, as I'm Chair of DART again, and it's a, it's a very challenging situation and, and so, and discussion, because everybody's, everybody's different.
Right, and I can sympathize, I mean, you've got a very tall order, I mean, it's, I wouldn't want to have to do what you're doing, that is a very tough position to be in, and is, is you, just like your group, our group or anything, you know, we're here with budget meetings, trying to figure out how we're going to get certain positions and certain equipment items, and making those decisions right now, and inevitably, what comes up is, when do you have a, you should use an example, because you're here, the 110,000 dollars in this queue rides we have, of course, then the theory starts becoming, well, why don't we just have a part-time person and buy a bus? I mean, we can do that for 60,000 a year, and get a rise on the fly. I mean, I know it's not that easy, but those are the kind of discussions that started coming up, and those are all things we struggle with.
Well, and I'll, I'll commit to you, and I'll commit DART to you, that for the next 18 months, we're going to, we're, we're going to talk about it.
Sure.
And, and I want to get together with the other small communities, the Bond Durant's and the Mitchellville's, and maybe we have a, a discussion with city managers and mayors and whoever wants, sit down and say, "What is that level of service that, and what is it that you need to, to be a part of regional transit?"
And public input from the small communities, not just us sitting up here, but from the residents, you know, you know, some sort of an open forum or something for them to figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for coming out, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your turn, anything?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to piggyback a little bit on Councilman Sarches' comments on the Neighborhood Citizens They are actually going to be part of the lights-on ceremony. As you will recall, there was punch tags to win the door prize that night, and they're going to be represented on that punch card that will be going around. They will be in the community building room, we'll have a place set up for them. I'd also like to tell Council that the Des Moines Water Works has a water rate increase that will go into effect April 1, and that will be effective with, April 1, with any water that we receive from them, and we'll have to be proactive to make sure that the water rate increase doesn't become a liability for us, and that we get that covered. With that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Perfect. Attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Engineer?
Engineer.
Public works?
The parking lot at the Sports Complex has started, they got a really good jump on it. I would anticipate that it's probably going to be finished up this week. Also, the guys are repairing pretty much the, replacing the girls softball dugouts, there were some major problems down there, but our staff is doing that, so that's going on also down there.
Very looks better. Nice job.
Hey, and I want to piggyback on that to say, I know that you met with Little League, I know you met with North Polk, and I know we've gone down this road, and so I really appreciate your willingness to work with both groups. Have everybody out there, we've all signed off on it, and we'll, we'll work next spring on some other issues as far as how we're going to get cars in there and stuff, but I just, I thank you and your staff for everything you've done there and working with other groups as well, very important. Anything else, Mike? Jay?
Finance?
Fire department?
Uh, just, just two things, one, you've probably noticed from the consent agenda tonight, the, the change that we did in wages certainly had an impact and helped with our part-time staff, so we hired three part-time paramedics. We got six applications this time, which was better than one in the past, so, and we did get our three positions filled, and then this last Saturday, we had our volunteer paid-on-call recruiting open house, and I think we had right around 10 people that came to that, and so, we'll have a bunch, hopefully a, a group of new regards starting from the paid-on-call side.
In-town people or out-town people?
All, well, we had a few that were not in-town, but the majority of them were all residents, so.
Good.
So it's pretty secure.
I'd just like to say too, I had a couple of the, several actually, fire department guys and gals thanked me for, as Council it is, for the work with the wages, they're very appreciative, and, you know, just like to recognize that, I didn't take this on deaf ears.
Figured you were just taking it, carrying it, thank you.
No, they actually came to me and just said, "Thank the Council," that was the words, not me, but the Councils.
Got you. Police department?
I have my monthly report in the packet, so if you have any questions, I can answer those. And then I do have one last thing I want to, to drop to me anymore. We had a really unfortunate event where an Des Moines police officer was killed this past month, ambushed in the line of duty, and I've been to situations like that in the past, different departments, different cities, and I want to thank the city representation for the support that I received from them, and no offense, but pale in comparison, I want to thank all the citizens, we, I bet we had over 100 citizens stop in individually into the police department. I was meeting with some of the council members and had to keep breaking up the meetings because the doorbell just kept ringing, people bringing us food and, and want to express their condolences and want to know if there's anything they could do, so I just wanted to thank everybody and let them know that the, the gifts of food they brought for us, we were able to disperse some of that at, you know, as we were going to the funerals and doing different details, and a lot of our officers worked 18, 20 hours on the street, but they would work, and then they wanted to attend these funerals and do funeral courts for the officers, and, and so I just want to, again, I don't want to get too long-winded here, but it was very moving, I've never worked anywhere where we had that kind of support and have a tragedy for law enforcement that, that we've had here in Polk City.
Thanks for what you do.
I'd like to add my two cents worth again. I was at the funeral with my son, and I saw the guys from Polk City represented the city very well. I mean, as you know, there's officers there from coast to coast, but it did show very well for Polk City. You know, it's unfortunate that we have such cowards in our community that would do something like that to people, but I guess that's why we have this ACLU, so.
Come, thank you.
Yep. Nice work.
Library, uh, library?
Nothing.
No citizen liaison?
No.
Take a motion? Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?